Okay, the time is now six o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call the Garnet Kansas City Commission Meeting for September eighth, two thousand twenty-two order. You'll please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Republic one nation
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you will, welcome Art Black with Garnet Church of Nazarene for the invocation.
Father, good Lord, we love you and we thank you, God, in all ways for salvation that is your Son, Jesus, Lord, but for your provision, both seen and unseen, God. We lift up these wonderful servants to you today, God. They give up so much of themselves and their time and their efforts, Lord, I ask that you would bless them, God, and that you would guide their words and their efforts, Lord, to that which is righteous, that which is best for everyone, Lord, and not just a select few, God. I ask that you would also bless them in their time at home, Lord, if they would be refreshed in that time that their family would be blessed, God, and that you would put a hand of protection on them and their family, God, to keep them from harm and from the evil, in Christ's precious name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art. I'll be right back. I just got a text from Cody Hutter. I guess he did, is waiting outside, so I'll let him in, I guess. Let him know what's in.
Well, in the meantime, are there any citizens to be heard?
I think Desiree is going to take care of it real quick, so. Might have Cody join me in here in a minute.
Okay, do you know if he wants to say anything for the citizens to be heard section?
I have not heard anything. Would anybody like to speak up for a citizen to be heard? It looks like we have a Garnet citizen and Paula.
Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the August twenty-fifth City Commission Meeting Minutes. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions? I did not. Commissioner Gwen?
I did not.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the August twenty-fifth City Commission Meeting Minutes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to Employee of the Month. Chris Hicks is the Employee of the Month this month. She has been described as having a wonderful upbeat attitude while in the office. I know that she's, we're really excited because she just informed us that there are a hundred members now that are a part of the Chamber of Commerce, and she has done excellent work promoting our local farmer's market. So, thank you so much for all that you've done, Chris Hicks.
I do think she'll probably make the next meeting.
Wait a minute, there's another. Okay, we'll move on to Governing Body Comments. So, Commissioner Gwen, did you have any comments?
The only thing I'd like to say that the, I thought the celebration of service was very nice the other night, and the fireworks were great, and it was, it was kind of unique having it later in the year. I really enjoyed it, so, good time by all. That's all I got.
Hey, sorry, I had something messed up on my end. Commissioner Gwen, I don't know, did you have any comments that you wanted to make? Or did I miss them?
You didn't miss much, so.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, I lost service, I'm sorry. Okay, so Commissioner Cole?
Well, since you missed Greg's, those were the same. I had the celebration of service fireworks. I really, I really appreciated everybody's work on that. It takes a lot to put something like that together, so I appreciate everybody for doing that.
Okay, um, as for me, I had received an email about the terms of contracts and how they're listed, or terms of our boards and how they're listed online. Chris, I didn't know if you could clarify. On our website, it looks as though some of the board members might not have the correct expiration of term limits.
So, that should be corrected now, or if it's not corrected now, I believe it is, but if it's not, then it'll be corrected tomorrow. The information that we exchanged, there was miscommunication, and so that should be rectified already or here shortly if it's not. But the, the terms, as far as the expiration dates that were listed, were basically what the, if the terms are renewed, what the next year, or next full term's ending date would be. So, that's kind of why those numbers look like, though those are some really long terms, but we try to give that kind of so the board members may know, okay, well, so my term for this current term expires in end of next year, and then, you know, if I'm choosing to do a full, another full term, you know, I'd be on this board until, you know, twenty twenty-five, or whatever the case.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that for me. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to regular business. Item A, presentation by Quickcom Communications in regards to fiber optic internet. Chris, was anyone able to make it for the discussion?
So, I believe we have multiple individuals, Eric Vogel, Zach Perez, Bert Peterson, and Mike Burns, all joining us this evening via Zoom to discuss the opportunity to bring fiber, not only to City Hall and all of our city facilities, but to every business and residence in the community. They spoke with the county commissioners earlier this morning, and had, I believe, a positive and productive conversation with the county commission, and we did have a meeting here, oh, it's probably been two, three weeks ago now, with all these same parties and had a better productive conversation at that point. So, they do have a, I believe, a good proposal in terms of, you know, providing us with a good opportunity, but it's, it is something that certainly will, will require your, your approval to move forward with. So, I, with that, Zach, I'd let you take it away. If you, if you'd like to kind of tell us a little bit about what you do at Quickcom, and your, your little background on the company and involvement with Garnet, and kind of where we're at moving forward.
Well, actually, I'm going to let Eric probably start off the lead here, and then I think Mike's going to be jumping in.
Okay.
All right, hello, everybody. I'm the operations manager here with Quickcom. Just let me know if you can't hear me or something. So, I kind of started this off like I did this morning with the county. We have, Quickcom Communications, we're based out of Iowa, Kansas. We were founded in twenty-ten. For the last five, six years, we've been growing and expanding our internet services in Anderson County and Garnet. We've actually had in the last year or two, a pretty phenomenal response in homes and businesses in Garnet, and it's been a really good area for us to be in, and we really appreciated Anderson County and Garnet as just, you know, covering the area with our wireless internet. About three years ago, we took on, so we have a wireless product, we serve about forty-four counties today. About three years ago, we decided to branch out into fiber optic to the home and to the business, and we started that project in Iowa. Obviously, our hometown, we want to, we wanted to test it, make sure that we knew what we were doing before we really spread it out. But since then, we've built out, we're about half done with Iowa. That's kind of our winter project. We've built out three-fourths of Fredonia, Kansas, with fiber to the home. Really, the major hang-up there is just getting enough bandwidth into town. We're actually getting ready to run twenty miles of fiber to bring more bandwidth into the town of Fredonia, and then this March, we started in on the city of Osawatomie, and we will, we should have it done here in the next thirty days, thirty to forty-five days. So, that's kind of our current progress. We're getting very good at it, and we've got probably another six or seven communities that are wanting us to come, run this infrastructure in their, in their towns, and we feel like Garnet is a very good possibility to bring this service to that. It's gigabit fiber, so if you've heard of Google Fiber. They kind of went into Olathe and did their thing, so it's gigabit speed internet, but it's, it's a local company that actually cares about the community, and we, we feel like that would be a good product to bring to Garnet. So, that's, that's kind of the backstory and where we're starting from. Mike or Bert, maybe you could speak to why Garnet would be one of the places that we're looking at?
Can you, Mike? Okay, so can, can everyone hear me now?
Good, Mike.
Um, yeah, we've, as Chris alluded to, we had a couple really good meetings. The first meeting that we had, we're here at our corporate offices, and, and then we just went and met with the county commissioners this morning. So, just a little back, background on, you know, why are we involved with Quickcom? And I'm going to first talk a little bit personally. Several years ago, out of my home, I struggled with getting adequate internet service. You guys can imagine, my wife and I do a lot of work from home. It was really important for us to be able to have connectivity. We actually had CenturyLink bury a cable to our home. We had two DSLs. It was still horrible. It wasn't meeting our needs at all. We tried several other options, and I heard about a company called Quickcom. So, I called them, Eric Gilligan came out, got us all set up, and it was like a miracle. All of my problems went away. So, I started to recommend Quickcom to more and more people. As I started to visit with Quickcom more, we started talking to them about connecting all of our thirty businesses or business locations across Kansas and Missouri, or at least the parts where Quickcom was at. That conversation led into more of a partnership discussion, and it really kind of came full circle when, just not too long ago, there was a need for Quickcom to have access to fiber, and our building right here next to Casey's that we own, Bert literally came down the hallway one morning and said, hey, Mike, Quickcom needs to tap into Kansas FiberNet's trunk to bring greater bandwidth over to their tower over by the high school. I said, well, okay, that's probably a pretty good idea, and they're going to go ahead and bring fiber to us, which was a big savior for, for me. I looked out, they already had equipment sitting there, and three or four days later, they had it up and going and providing basically some other redundancies over to the tower over at the high school to meet the demands that the community had. A little backstory, too, on what it means to me as our company. Just a little over a year ago, when we were realizing that without fiber, our existence here in Garnet was at risk, and we talked about it as a team, and some of you may not know, but we have over twenty people here in our offices. We're needing to expand right now, and, but the biggest challenge we had is trying to connect to our pharmacies, but also backing up all of the data that we warehouse here in our office. Without that, we weren't going to be able to stay in Garnet. Now, with Quickcom, there should never be a reason that we have to leave Garnet due to, due to internet issues. So, that told me, how many other businesses out there are in a situation where Auburn Pharmacy was? And I will tell you, Bert's sitting here, and he mentioned it today in the county commission meeting, he was the one that voted to relocate, meaning he was going to have to commute. We own a forty thousand square foot building in Olathe, Kansas. We're relocating our largest long-term care facility there. There's plenty of office space there, we already have it, and actually, over half of our employees that we have here at our office now commute into Garnet from somewhere up north. So, for half of our employees here at the corporate office, it was going to be closer for them, also for, for future recruitment. It was going to be easier for us to find the talent and the skill sets that we need, being closer to the city. Obviously, we live here, Garnet's our home. We want to continue to grow our corporate office. When we found out that we could get that solution through Quickcom, it was an easy, easy decision for us to stay here. But we know that there's going to be other businesses, if they're not already, that realize that internet is going to make a difference on where they locate. Now, the county commissioners mentioned this morning that there were two businesses that had considered coming to Garnet. They didn't tell us what their names were, but they were really frustrated that they wanted to come to Garnet, but when they found out that they didn't have access to fiber, they quickly changed their mind. They, they're going somewhere else. We'll talk a little bit about what that, what our offer really means, but the, in the end of the, end of the meeting this morning, the county commissioners all gave us their verbal approval. They said, we're a hundred percent behind it. Let's see what the city says. If the city's behind it, we'll match what we do. Then we're behind it, let's get the contract to look at, get it signed, let's start construction. The big question is, why, why aren't other people here in Garnet wanting to bring fiber to everybody's home and business? Because it's just not financially viable right now. We have a group of other communities, and Eric can talk to this, too, that are waiting for us to give a commitment. They've already came forward with, with offers. Obviously, I want Garnet to be the next community. I want Anderson County to be the next place that Quickcom comes and installs fiber. We, we, he talked, I think, a little bit about Fredonia, talked about Iowa. We're finishing up Osawatomie, we think we'll be done there in about another thirty days. I'm going to let Eric talk a little bit about what Osawatomie spent and what they got out of it. We, you know, we are needing, in order to even make it somewhat feasible, we need two hundred thousand dollars to make this work, to help pay for the infrastructure and the build-out. Well, what does that mean? Fortunately, right now, the county has a hundred thousand of Spark money that they won't have after the end of the year. They have committed fifty thousand, and we're asking the city for another fifty. That would be the two hundred thousand that we need. We could start construction here in roughly a month. We believe it'd take us six to eight months to do the build-out. By April or May, maybe June, we should have it all complete. Part of the offering, too, is to also bring in Greeley. And so, now, also as part of that, which was really important to the county and should be important to the city, the other thing that we're offering, that we know that the city and the county, school districts, everybody needs it. If you don't need it now, you're going to need it tomorrow. You're going to need to connect every building, every facility, every office that you have. The easiest way for us to describe that, if you don't understand it, it's like having a telecom system, where it doesn't matter where you're at in the city or the county, it's no different than being across the hall, hitting the button and saying, hey, Eric, you know, I need to talk to you. So, you're avoiding, you're avoiding the phone companies. You are virtually connected. And for transfer of data, there are a lot of software vendors that if you can hit one, hit one server, that's fine, you're going to pay once, but if you're going to have to access it in multiple locations, you're going to pay more. Also, from an internet service standpoint, if you're in five different buildings, six, eight buildings, you're going to pay six or eight times. Once you're all connected, you will pay one fee. That fee will depend on how much bandwidth you need. I don't know how much a city needs, but we would have to do an analysis and find out what that would be, but it'd be one fee because you all would virtually be connected. So, really, what does that mean? If you're going to commit fifty thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money, what is, what are you getting for that? Well, you're going to have Quickcom come in and put together the infrastructure to connect all of the city's buildings. You're not going to find anyone out there that's going to do it for that price. Why can we do it for that price? Well, to be honest, a big part of that is, we're, we're hoping that we get enough subscribers here in Garnet to help start, recover our investment. Now, obviously, we're biased because we're here in Garnet, we're here in Anderson County. We already have a fair number of fixed wireless subscribers here in the city of Garnet. Some of you on, on the call here may be customers already. That's a little bit cannibalistic. We would be better off going to some other communities where we don't already have a fair number of subscribers, because that would all be new revenue to us. Also, some of these communities are offering a greater proportion of our build-out costs. We have cut it down to where we believe that for the two hundred thousand, we can make it happen. It's kind of a one-time opportunity. We don't want anyone to take that as a threat in any way. But if we go to these other communities and we start putting them on the schedule, it might be at least a year before we can ever get back to Garnet. Now, what that other, that also means is that other hundred thousand that the county has in Spark money is not going to be available. I know the county was real quick to point out the fact that, yes, it's Spark money, but they're already committing the fifty. They're paying seventy-five percent. All the city has to do is pay twenty-five percent. And of course, in their opinion, they feel like the city's getting the greatest benefit, the city of Garnet, because this is where, you know, the greatest number of Anderson County citizens reside. You know, we, we also mentioned, too, though, that we would go into Greeley, and I think that's pretty important as well. So, you know, what does the city of Garnet get from it? Well, first of all, you're going to get the infrastructure put in today that you're going to need tomorrow, and you're going to get it for fifty thousand. What else do you get for fifty thousand? The intangible that we don't know is how many other businesses like Auburn will leave, or will come, or won't come, if we don't have adequate access to fiber. And we do know that CenturyLink, Vive, and those other companies, and Kansas Fiber Network, I'll kind of explain a little bit about, more about what they do. They are not willing to do it. They are not going to. They've told us they have no plans of doing it. We are the only company in our area that we're aware of that is doing this. And it's not without risk, guys, there is a lot of risk. But Kansas FiberNet, the way I explain Kansas FiberNet, they have, they're kind of like the interstate and the state highway systems. That's all they're going to do. They're going to put in the, the main trunks, the highways, but they're not going to put roads into the communities, they're not going to do county roads, they're not going to come into the communities. That's where Quickcom comes in. We connect to the Kansas FiberNet Highway, and then we bring in the main arteries coming into the community, and then we go ahead and come directly to every business and every residence within the city limits of Garnet. Now, that is a major investment for us. We're hoping over time that it, it works out for us. But, so that's really what you get. The intangible, we can't tell you what that means, but I think we all know, with more and more people working remotely, Google announced about a month ago that all of their employees are going to continue to work remotely until July of two thousand twenty-one. That's Google. All these other companies are doing the same thing. What, what we all believe is, there's going to be more and more people that are going to be able to work from home, and for those people that want to live in a small community now, the commute isn't a problem. They're going to look for those small communities where they have fiber, or if somebody's already currently working from home and they're having trouble with their connectivity, they're going to have to look, where are they going to, where are they going to locate? So, you know, this is one more thing that, that Garnet needs. You need it as a city and a county. We also need it for our citizens and our small businesses. So, you know, with that, I'll kind of stop, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask. But that, if the ask today is for the city to commit fifty thousand, the county has already committed a hundred and fifty, and we could start construction in, in, in October. And, and by May, June, it's all going to, you know, weather dependent, but by spring or summer, we'll have full connectivity around the community and ready to go. So.
And that includes connectivity to the airport, by the way.
That's it, yeah. And Chris was going to develop a list. We have the county working on that, too, right now, to make sure that, you know, that we get the full list of everything that they need connected, and then we have to get the engineering started. So, we'll handle all the engineering, we'll handle all the, the build-out and the infrastructure for that price. So, you know, it's not, it's, the intangible is, we really don't know what that's going to mean for our community in the future. We do know that cable is going away. I think Chris or somebody had a number that there's eighty-some cable subscribers in the whole city of Garnet. That tells me cable's going away. Probably half of those are out at Parkside Place. I don't know, but I guess. So, and satellite. Satellite has its own limitations as well. Is it, is it basically line of sight? Yes, it is, but it's also coming from a satellite, it's not coming from a close tower. Right now, we do have the line of, the fixed wireless coming from the towers, and, but we're also, we're still limited on the bandwidth there. To put things in perspective, the, the largest package that we can offer right now with fixed wireless is twenty-five megabits, and they talked about a gigabit when we go fiber. That's twenty times the, let's see, forty. That's forty times the capacity that I get at my home right now. And I can tell you, at my home, I can have six or eight TVs on Netflix, and ten or twenty people on their cellphones, and I have no problems at home. I might have problems eventually, but I can tell you, my business here, my business can operate on that. We already tried that. We have to have fiber, or we were going to have to leave Garnet. So, anyway, stop there, Bert.
This is an investment in the next fifty years in Garnet. This, this sets up fifty years of communications advancements and puts us on the map for.
It's hard to hear you, Bert.
What's that?
It's hard to hear you.
Sorry. This is a, this is an investment for the next fifty years in Garnet and communications and bringing us into modern times for modern businesses and the problems that are, that are going to arise. People need to come here, stay here as business people, even residents. I mean, the internet demands on people working from home, et cetera, just beyond belief, and all of the students, children's working, learning from home, so to speak. It's, it's not going away, and we don't have adequate infrastructure in the city, certainly in the county right now, and this, this changes that for the next fifty-plus years.
I would toss out there, the services that we're talking about offering in exchange is layer-two connection. So, if you imagine the network, say, in the City Hall building, but now you run that out and connect it to the airport and other facilities throughout the city that you need to connect back. I, I think one big one Chris brought up was just connecting the police department to the sheriff's department, transferring the big files off video footage, et cetera.
Isn't there a problem with bidirectional communications when it comes to fiber optics?
No, so, I mean, the fiber going to ground today, technology allows you a lot higher, but we can run up to a hundred gigabits, full duplex, no problem on two strands of fiber. So, this, this particular product is basically gig down to the house, and we offer up to a hundred megs upload service today, but it's capable more.
But handles bidirectional communication as well, is what you're saying? You have a problem with bidirectional communication?
No.
Insecurities, not a, not a problem, or can you access easier at one location into the, the whole system? When you access the, the wires themselves, as opposed to the wireless, isn't there a security issue there, too?
The, you know, so like telephone is an allot of products, so obviously, if you can pick up the electrical signal coming through it, you can, you can grab the signal out of it. Fiber's not that way, so fiber actually is encrypted over the line in the first place, especially residential and fiber stuff. And then, you know, the point-to-point stuff, again, it's all, you're talking digital here, so it's all modulated out signal. You would have to break into like a router and steel pack it out of the hub. I mean, that's going to be any.
With the long-term cost being lower, the initial startup costs typically higher. For me, just a regular citizen, what is, what does that equate into? I'm, I'm not a business, but if I'm going to get on this thing.
We, it's our typical seventy-five dollar installation charge plus your first month.
Okay, you're shutting down every argument I had.
I pay, Art, I pay, I do the hundred and five a month. Plus, I've got a lot of other radios I'm paying for because I want it broadcasted, broadcast throughout my house, even out in my backyard. But for a hundred and five, but the, the base plan's fifty-five. I know a lot of people that are on it are completely happy with the fifty-five. They don't need what I need, but they certainly have the capability to go up. But when you get up to a hundred and five, again, it, and I, I found nothing that would even compare to it. I was paying more than that with CenturyLink for those two DSLs, and it was horrible. And we have, gosh, one TV, trying to stream one TV and a couple cellphones, and it wouldn't work.
So, there, I hear you say there's a installation fee. Is that correct for each consumer?
Yes, there's a one-time seventy-five dollar installation fee. That's to bring it from the pole or wherever the closest connection is that we've installed, to be a one-time fee coming to the house.
It's seventy-five dollars, so we've always charged seventy-five dollars. We don't do contracts, so we figure if you can't pay the seventy-five, you probably can't afford your internet bills. So, it's kind of like our security in a contract.
And, and that is something unique that I was surprised with Quickcom. Most internet companies, you're going to sign a contract and guarantee that you're going to be with them a year, or they're not going to bring you, bring five, bring internet.
And I'll tell you, so we, we don't do contracts for many reasons, but the biggest is, you know, if you're not happy with our service, we don't want you to have it, you know? So, I'm not going to force you to keep it with a piece of paper, and we find all of our customers are very happy. We have a very, very, very low churn rate because we have a great service, and we have really good support to go behind it. really good support to go behind it. You know, all of our call center is based here in Iola or Wichita, and it's all in-house. We don't outsource things. And so, we've always felt it was a better idea to keep customers with good service and support than a piece of paper.
Do the commissioners have any specific questions?
My question to Chris is, are, do you have any idea what our annual cost is for internet at all our locations annually?
A definite number, no. But it's typically around eighty dollars a month per facility. Is that correct, Travis? I think we're about eighty bucks a month.
Yeah, roughly. I'd say at least, at least that. Seventy-nine ninety-five, I think, is what the bill says. And then you got router fees, router fees and taxes on top of that. So, yeah.
To reiterate, we're not proposing free internet access for the city here. It would just be the layer-two connectivity. And that's, we've done that in almost all communities. That allows you to choose whatever service you want, service level, and then you don't have to buy internet from us. You can buy it from anybody. Obviously, I would think you'd want to access the fiber internet, but, you know, it's, it's, internet is actually the cheap portion of it. Connecting your facilities together is the most expensive portion of that. Layer-two connectivity, on average, if you want to connect two sites point-to-point, you're probably going to spend at least a thousand dollars a month.
But I speak with Mike earlier, and he was saying that the, the cost would be one cost to the city, where now we'd be maybe paying multiple costs per, per location.
Well, so, our cost, the, the plan would be that, you know, they would build that interconnected network to each city facility built in to that fifty thousand dollar charge or fifty thousand dollar investment into the infrastructure. So, we wouldn't necessarily have the seventy-five dollar install cost ourselves, correct?
Correct. And you'd probably be buying more enterprise internet product anyway. And, you know, there's a lot of benefit to the city. It allows you to run everything back through a central location. Your IT company loves you, you know? And I don't know if the city's running any filters or had any problems with that. It allows you to get all that back in one place. The biggest one I saw is, as Mike pointed out earlier, cost of software to have multiple locations. So, you're saving that, in particular, when you're working with the sheriff's department for your PD. I would imagine that is one of your biggest expenses, the software next to killing.
Well, and the other big benefit is just the level of service that you would be getting if you did go with an enterprise connection, which would be our recommendation, is today, if your internet goes down, I'm guessing whoever you purchase it from might be there, might be here today, but it's probably going to be two or three days out. You know, the level of service that we would provide, we would recommend is where essentially we're going to show up within an hour or two to fix it. The other, the other benefit is you can go contract, you know, you could go contract anybody to run these lines between your facilities. They're going to charge you an arm and a leg to do it upfront, and then they're not going to come back and fix it. This would all be, you know, we would maintain these lines because we're invested in them ourselves. We're, we're running our service over, you know, the same, the same lines, so.
And Chris, just quick, looking up twenty-ten demographics here, fifteen-hundred-and-ninety-one housing units, is that in the ballpark?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, something else to take into consideration here. So, let's just say we sold internet to half the town. That's approximately seven-hundred-and-ninety-five houses, right? I can tell you an average internet bill amongst your whole community is going to come out to about seventy-eight dollars. And then the city currently has a franchise fee imposed on QuickCom under, I have that ordinance, ordinance four eight. So, that is, sorry, let me run back.
Five percent.
So, that's approximately just shy three thousand dollars a month in revenue back to the city off of the fiber connectivity as well.
And then that, that also doesn't, let's talk about the poll charge.
That doesn't count the poll charge, and I don't know if Eric has the poll count on what are proposed build.
I can probably get close.
Does everyone understand what we're talking about? That we have to pay an annual lease to be on your power poles? So, you would have that revenue as well. I know that, I don't, I'm, it kind of seems odd that it sounds like we're going to add the fee to increase your poll charge, but Chris said that your poll charge has not been, has not changed since nineteen-seventy-six.
You can leave it at three dollars, we won't complain.
What's going on? So, sorry.
What was that?
Chris, you can leave it at three dollars, we wouldn't complain.
Sounds like we're going to look at an overall increase, which would be an increase for us, and would be an increase for everybody else that's on your poles, too. I'm sure QuickCom would get blamed for that, but we have broad shoulders. But if you were to increase your poll charge, and so, am I right, Chris? It hasn't changed since nineteen-seventy-six?
Ah, yes, I believe so.
And the, the typical poll charge today is about seven-fifty to twelve bucks a year. So, three dollars is way below.
So, Chris, what, what, I mean, from a, from a citizen's standpoint, what process would you have to go through to change that charge for everybody else that's on your polls? Does that, you have an annual opportunity to give them that increase? What would that look like?
So, City Attorney Solander is working on, we're working on putting together basically a letter to our other current contractees that are on our polls, and I'm going to issue them a notice essentially that we're looking at severing the agreement. We have to give a certain timeframe to, to sever that agreement. And, you know, the intent there is not necessarily to truly sever the agreement, but to say, hey, look, we got to renegotiate this poll charge agreement, or this poll charge amount. And so, I assume that we will be successful in saying, hey, we want to keep the agreement in place, but instead of it being three dollars a year, it'll be ten dollars a year, is my expectation.
And I believe we already have the length of ours to come to an amicable agreement without having to sever ours, if I recall.
Yes, we do.
Chris's problem is, under Kansas statute, he has to change everybody's. He can't just change one.
Yeah, I like. So, I just, I just did a, I did a little bit of rough math here. Assuming we use six hundred poles, which I think is probably a little low, and assuming you do go to a ten dollar a year poll rent, that's six thousand dollars a year. If you divide that, if you divide fifty, the fifty thousand that we're asking for by that six thousand, you've, we've essentially paid you back in a, in a little over eight years.
That's without the franchise.
Just, that's just on the poll rent. That does not count the franchise that we would be paying back to the city.
Be, I would, I would expect to have a fifty percent plus to create Garnett, especially once we introduce the television network. So, you know, I would guess after a couple of years, you're going to have thirty-six thousand a year plus of franchise fees.
And plus the poll, over forty thousand a year that you're going to get back, plus, remember, we built your infrastructure for you, and we brought fiber to every, every household and every business.
Really, I.
Let's deal again.
I, I want to stress that we view this, QuickCom views this as a partnership with the city. We originally came, and Chris can attest to this, in our initial meeting, I'm, I've got rough figuring that we're going to spend about four hundred thousand dollars in material on the entire city. You can usually safely double that for the labor. So, you know, QuickCom's looking at eight hundred thousand dollars probably on the low end to invest into the city of Garnett. And, and all we're really asking for is, you know, a quarter of that from, from the city. And fortunately, the county is very on board, and I think they've been very, you know, their foresight has been very good. And they're taking most of that, most of that, three-quarters of that cost up on themselves. So, obviously, the spark money has come in at a very opportune time for helping out with that, so.
A question that commonly comes up, so QuickCom does all in-house construction. We don't bring in contractors, so we know who's going to be working your poles, who's in your back alleyways, who's boring out in front of the house, and always have a nice QuickCom shirt, QuickCom truck. We're all people we know and we vetted, so we're not, we're not bringing people, you know, contractors from out of town to your community who may not know. And I think that's another very important quality to us, and also reestablishing, you know, it's going to happen. Somebody's going to drive through a fiber line, or they're going to dig one up, you know? So, we're able to store service a lot faster as well.
Back to the, so, they're saying we're paying about eighty dollars per location per month, so just ballpark at a thousand dollars per location. I don't know how many that is, say, eight? So, that's eight thousand a year. What's this enterprise package or contract you're talking about that you thought the city would have? What's that run for, for years, for months, or?
So, it depends on the amount of bandwidth you buy. What makes enterprise unique? I think our cheapest one is what, four-fifty, Eric? So, it's a service level agreement. So, service level agreement has essentially an agreement that says if it goes down, we will be there the next day, which also guarantees bandwidth. So, that's, that's important to a lot of facilities nowadays. And that also would be available to your industrial customers or your, you know, somebody like Mike, for example. If internet goes down, that office probably just doesn't work. So, it's a big deal. So, so roughly.
You start looking at, you start looking at law enforcement, like the sheriff's department, the police department. Most of those, it's almost, it is becoming a requirement these days that those entities have a dedicated connection. So, we'd be talking about that, but for the entire city or the entire county, so. Facilities.
Your question, Greg, is it depends on the city. You guys need a hundred gigs, it's one price. If you need five hundred based on your needs, what we're doing in this process is setting up a VPN, we're connecting your, your buildings, your facilities with fiber. What you do with that fiber is up to your IT department. You don't have to buy internet from us. If you do, we have packages for enterprise level that start at four-fifty and go up from there. And what enterprise means is if Eric Vogel has got the ability to make it one phone, one visit, he's the last tech on site, and you call, or I call for internet at my house, he's coming to your house. You have a dedicated people, you're at the top of the priority list as an enterprise customer. It's a different level of service. Same internet, but what you pay is going to be based on the level of bandwidth that the city requires based on how the city sets up their IT and what their needs are. Everything from police, fire, city water plant, you can connect, you know, the trash, everything together, and how you set that up according to your IT people and the amount of bandwidth you're going to absorb is what it's going to cost.
So, so your real benefit, not necessarily saving on the internet, it's connecting facilities. And Chris, didn't you say you had already researched doing this prior due to some needs of the city?
Yeah, so here, oh, probably two and a half years ago, looked into, you know, what would it take for Kansas Fiber Net, because they were already coming to the, to the school district office and to the hospital. And so, talked then and said, hey, what would it, what would it cost to basically connect city hall? And I think I also asked about connecting the south shop and the fire department and library all together, because we're all real close right here. And I believe it was, it was between ninety and a hundred thousand just to connect those facilities together and get us fiber from what the corner of First and Walnut to here. And so, we're talking, you know, half that cost to provide interconnected network for all of our facilities and get fiber to the entire community, fiber to the home, fiber to the businesses. So, I mean, it's, it's a pretty good deal, and the payback is certainly there, you know, with the franchise fees, if they're successful. And I would imagine that over time, they will be in terms of getting market share with more reliable internet connection at faster speeds. But, you know, we have, I kind of tend to facilities, and at eight bucks a month, you're looking at about ten grand a year. And so, you know, our cost, as Zach pointed out, our cost would probably be about the same. It might, depending on the level of, of, you know, amount of data, the level of service that we get, we might be a little, kind of a little bit of cost savings, might be a little bit more. I just don't know. But, you know, it would probably be close to the same. But the key is that interconnectedity and reliability, and then getting it down to the whole town.
Would somebody speak to the franchise money that may come back to the city? How that works and what that looks like?
So, ordinance four-two-zero-eight, to sum it up, is essentially a five percent charge. We pass it on to the customer. So, it's, I'm sure today, if you have cable or phone, you see a franchise fee on your bill, and that's what that is. So, it's, it's five percent of if we charge you, you know, a hundred dollars, then, then we're going to pay five bucks to the city, or we're going to charge you an extra five dollars actually and pay it to the city. And then, under Kansas statute, that's also going to be sales taxed on top of it, so you get some sales tax revenue.
Any, any other questions? And Chris, I appreciate you. I couldn't remember exactly the numbers that you, when you went to KFN and talked to them, what it would cost. I think you said four buildings. Back then, you know, it was close to a hundred thousand. We're talking eight to ten buildings. And then again, you look at what, you know, the city and the county, what additionally they get out of it for the fifty. It's, you know, very, very confident, guys, this is a good deal, it's Garnett's ever going to get. And, you know, the, don't think, too, that when, when, when we partnered with QuickCom, this conversation was had a long time ago. What can we do for Garnett? If Mike and Bert are going to partner with QuickCom, what can we do for Garnett? And obviously, our names are behind it. We're right here. It's what we told the county commissioners. You know, we're not from out of town. We are here locally. And, you know, if you have any questions or concerns, you can talk to us, but, you know, we're putting everything we have behind this project. And I think, you know, the numbers alone, like hearing Chris talk about, and again, you have to understand, you're going to connect these buildings eventually. You're going to. You really don't have a choice. So, here's a one-time opportunity where we can capitalize on the fact that we're betting on the come, we're hoping that we get the number of subscribers to make our investment worthwhile. We also have the benefit of the hundred thousand in spark money from the county. We also have the benefit that the county's already committed their fifty, as long as the city commits their fifty. Now, actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, the county doesn't get any franchise, correct, Zach?
Correct. It's only in the city, and it's for fiber customers only. So, today, our fixed wireless customers, the city makes no money on.
Yep. So, really, the county's really stepped up. So, for the city, this is a really, really good deal. If, if, if in the first two years we hit the numbers we hope to get, then you're going to get payback almost in one year. If you get thirty-six thousand in a franchise fee and six thousand in poll charges, you've got forty-two thousand a year coming. You've already got your infrastructure for all ten buildings in place, and the whole city is going to get access. And we talked with the city of Greeley as well. So, we think that's.
And, and, and we're going to work extremely hard to make sure there's as many customers in Garnett as possible to get those franchise fees up as soon, as soon as possible, so.
As Eric pointed out, we have an investment, two hundred thousand dollars to Garnett, Kansas in the process. And so, obviously, we get our money back through sales.
I'd like to say from the library perspective that this would be awesome. I mean, fiber in town would be awesome, maybe, you know, whether you go with this plan or not. But it's something we struggle with every day, trying to, we have better internet now than what we've had in the past, but we still struggle to have enough bandwidth, whatever. If, you know, our computers are busy and people are using the wifi and things like that, so for your pay, for your people in the community that use the library for their source for internet, which tends to be your people who can't afford to have it at home, this would be really awesome for them, as well as the staff. It would be great for us. But, in fact, another thing just came up today with our security system, and it runs through the internet, and we've been having trouble with it. And we're looking at having to spend some money to kind of change how that is. If we had this, if we had the, the. If we had this, if we had the high speed, we could, probably wouldn't be having that issue with our system. So just a couple of things to think about, but from a perspective of working with the citizens of Garnet and helping them have internet access, fiber would be a really nice thing and would really improve our service to the community, so.
What you're saying is one of the nice things is you have people from the community that gets to come to the library and get access to internet. The bad thing is it slows it down for you all in the office, right? Yeah.
I think a point to be made here that we found out in our corporate office, when you get the connectivity between the buildings and the speeds available that we're talking about, different products become available to your organization. I can't speak anything to managing a water plant or managing a power company as the city does. But when everything's connected and everything speaks, there's probably a lot of different products out there that can help the city manage its resources in a better, more efficient manner. Not that we would be able to help you find those or administer those, that's up to you, but when you have this ability that you've never had before, you may find significant savings or efficiencies just simply from the capability alone.
So on the library front, QuickCom is certified with USAC, so I think in Osawatomie, they still bring their internet in separate from the library due to the USAC funding. Obviously, they can't get mixed with the city stuff, that becomes a mess. And also, all of our network runs back to the main data center in Kansas City at eleven oh two grand. And so we're able to peer with a lot of people there. One of those, I don't remember the exact name, but it's the Kansas Research and something, it's the Schools and Libraries Network is what I know it as, but that's somebody we can peer with, and I think we may already do that for a few other customers. Your association in the library would probably have a lot more information on it, but we can make it available, so.
Any other questions? I think we've covered, kind of, the revenue, the opportunities, the timing. Anybody else?
I don't have any more questions. Chris, what do you need from the commission? Just a quick vote, a poll, or?
Well, if you decide to move forward, then yes, I would need a motion, a second, and a vote to authorize the fifty thousand if that was your decision. If you wanted to go a different direction, then I would certainly need, I guess, some guidance there, but, you know, yeah, I would say the appropriate thing to move forward would be a motion, a second, and then vote.
And that's to proceed with interest on a verbal commitment or verbal approval, kind of like the county did?
Yeah, so the county commission this morning gave verbal agreement to put up fifty thousand out of their budget, so to speak, and the hundred thousand in Spark Money, so a hundred and fifty from the county, verbal commitment contingent upon the city putting forth a fifty thousand as well. So if we verbally commit to spending the fifty thousand, my expectation is that then QuickCom will probably start drafting contracts that we both can then take to respective commissions, and they can probably go ahead and start moving forward on some engineering and getting some pieces in place to be able to have a quick turnaround from moving from Osawatomie to Garnet, because I know they're looking at moving forward pretty quickly out of Osawatomie here in the near future. So I'd probably have, on our next agenda, contracts to approve would be my expectation.
I think that, I just had a couple of questions or things to think about. So since this is based, well, asking the cities to subsidize the installation, I am kind of curious as to how long it's going to take QuickCom to recuperate the cost of installation? I mean, when do you anticipate to start making a profit?
Our goal is always as quick as possible, but realistically, it's gonna be twelve to eighteen months before we probably truly see a return on investment.
So is it typical in most of your communities that you go to that you have the city subsidize the cost of the installation?
We've done it in some portion of three different builds so far, so everyone's been a little bit more unique. Osawatomie was one that they needed fiber between a couple of facilities, because they were putting in a generating station, had to connect back to ACPNL. Also had the same issue with needing to connect some facilities together in the city for, in particular, the police department. Every quote they got prior was four hundred plus thousand dollars in their community build it, and, you know, so we worked with the city administrator, we came in and said, hey, you know, we both see an opportunity here, doesn't make us a lot of sense to go just build this out of the blue. But, you know, if you want to put in some money, we can get you what you need and we can get what we want out of it. And so that's worked well. Fredonia was one that we were building fiber to the home. Connectivity to Fredonia is awful, to put it as nice as I can. And so we actually had stopped construction there due to bandwidth constraints, and so that's where we went to the city of Fredonia and they chipped in sixty thousand, just a straight grant to build a twenty-mile backbone, which doesn't get anywhere near the cost of even the material. But it was a big deal for their community and it gets them off of relying on the one provider they have to get there. Garnet's same way, you know, for building fiber, it makes the most sense for us to go to like a Bonner Springs or Wellsville or, you know, Spring Hill, where we can just go build housing additions with ninety percent take rates, very cheap construction, quick construction, it's laid out for it, you know. And I think Garnet's gonna be a great place, I think we're gonna have good return here, but it does take us longer. It's not exactly designed to run a fiber utility through it, you know, and it's, the demographics are a little different, so it takes a little bit longer to get that ROI on it.
Steering committee point of view, that one of the biggest complaints I get or I've heard is it's hard to get service in Garnet. It really is, a lot of people have a problem with it. I know I'm with my internet providers just wowsing, so I've been having trouble with internet for a long, long time, but a lot of people have a problem with internet. So anything that can be done to speed things up is better. Also, being in Buffalo, I have people that come to my church down there from Fredonia, and I've not heard anything bad about things that are going on down there. So everything that I can think of in my head, I would point to, this would be a good thing for Garnet.
And so, you know, the investment from the community helps us get it done faster is what it really does, and it is enticing, obviously, if we can get ROI a little bit faster on it. So the capital injection on the grant really does help. And as Eric pointed out, you know, it's not even paying for all the material, so, you know, but it goes a long ways for us when we run the math on the project.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think the only other question I had is how? In light of advancements, obviously, a lot of things are going wireless now. So if you look to the potential with Starlink, for example, or even 5G, how would you defend fiber optic in that sense?
Well, so those are a couple of different things there, so, you know, I think Starlink's gonna still have what I would call physics constraints, you know, so it's not gonna be as bad as current satellite, but you can still only transmit at speed of light, right? So, you know, that's what tells us basic math, what it takes us to get to geosynchronous orbit and back on satellite today. So they're gonna substantially cut that down with Starlink, but it's still gonna be a hundred-plus millisecond latency. And, you know, that doesn't work for a lot of things nowadays, we're a very on-demand society, we do things like Zoom meetings, you know. So that is kind of the first piece on that. 5G is something I would really like to preface it with is a marketing term, you know, 4G was a marketing term, and you see it when AT&amp;T or these come out and say 5G evolved, which is just 4G rebranded as 5G. And so, millimeter wave is really what is being aimed at with 5G, and it can do a lot. It can go a long ways in terms of transmitting bandwidth, but it doesn't go through obstacles very well. It's really better designed for dense urban area or, you know, a stadium where there's problems when you have seventy thousand fans show up and click online. So I don't see that being as big of an issue, and then the funnier part about 5G, when they're doing the small cell build-outs, is they need fiber ran to every single node to make it work.
Yeah, I heard that they were complementary in some cases, 5G and fiber optic together.
They can be, and you know, if we were going out and hiring contractors to build fiber, I would say that it would make a lot of sense for us to pay a contractor to come in and run a fiber loop through a town like Garnet and put up millimeter wave radios. We looked at this years ago. We can build it at a low enough cost in-house compared to a contractor that we don't need to do that, it's actually less expensive for us to run fiber straight to the home, which is ultimately a better product. You know, and that's, if you went and asked AT&amp;T what it costs for them to pass a house or CenturyLink in Garnet's case, it's gonna be a substantially different number than ours. And that's something that, you know, we have to look at, and they look at as well, so.
Yeah, so I had heard someone mention that CenturyLink and VIVE were not at all interested in, I guess, installing citywide fiber optic, is that right?
I generally don't speak to our competition, but I'll let Chris step in.
So the conversations that I've had, at least, I would say CenturyLink, I think that's, that's not gonna happen. VIVE, I think they would, they would like to, but I think that it's probably something that their business model, I don't expect that to happen. They did finally go ahead and invest in buying bandwidth, basically to tap into KFN's fiber backbone, which that was a significant ordeal to get them to do that, because prior to that, they were just on a microwave tower outside of the west side of town. But they got to the point to where they couldn't handle all their customers in town through that, and so they, well, we need to have fiber and... I don't expect them to make the investment to build out fiber to the home, because it is expensive, and, you know, at least everything that I've seen from VIVE has been more along the lines of that they will try to do what they can to maximize profit margin and, you know, expanding infrastructure is costly, and, you know, it's an expansive capital cost, and I just haven't seen a whole lot of movement in that, on that regard from, or at least in our local community. I mean, they've got Atchison, they've got Ottawa, that are much larger communities that likewise, they haven't built out fiber in those communities. And so I just, I don't see it happening any time in the near future. You may recall here, a couple of years ago, you know, I was pushing that if nobody, if we can't get anybody to come in here and build fiber, I was trying to get you on board with having a city-run fiber utility. Now, Chanute's done it, Ottawa started it a little bit, but, you know, even doing that, that's probably gonna be, in terms of our cost, while we would have the revenue stream, it's gonna be over a million dollars plus to buy the equipment, to hire the extra person out to get them trained and run our own utility. And that's certainly still an option, but, you know, you could accomplish the same end with a fifty thousand dollar investment and still get franchise fees and still get pole attachment fees. Your revenue stream, you know, long-term's not gonna be quite as lucrative, because they're gonna be the ones generating the profit, but you also don't absorb the risk, near the amount of risk at least. Our risk is fifty thousand dollars, and in the event the market share doesn't happen, they're the ones who are gonna take that hit. You know, City of Chanute has had a tremendous challenge with getting people to switch from Cox and from the other internet providers, and so it was, they've had issues in trying to recoup their capital investment cost, and we could avoid all of that by this investment. While I certainly would prefer the utility ourselves, because I like having the city-operated municipal utilities, but for the cost and the risk-reward ratio, I think this is a pretty good opportunity.
The only reason, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, on that risk, I mean, I don't know, Chris, you're kind of scaring me a little bit, but, but there is inherent risk in what we're doing, and that's why you don't have people standing in line coming to the city and county commissions wanting to do this. They're just, they're not out there, and we are willing to take the risk. You know, we're privately held, what we feel that we need for an ROI obviously isn't what the other big companies need, but that's why we're here. We're here, we're making the offer, and we're making it today.
I'd like to address your question as well, Bridget, if you'll notice, I'm speaking with this shirt on right now. I'm the guy in charge of what fiber comes here and our IT distribution. We had CenturyLink and we had VIVE. That's how we met QuickCom, and that is how we solved our problem. We were trying to use the two companies to meet our needs and could not do that, and then we just got out of contract and fully, and QuickCom meets all of our needs by itself. We tried our best, as you know, I came to the city to build the same network before Chris was hired, but Joyce and Kansas Fiber Net came in and laid the trunk lines, and I think we all thought they were going to take care of the rest of the town, and then they, and did what they did and took off, and we're here to take it to the, take it to the next level and give everybody the joy that we've been able to purchase. So I don't think anybody's going to do it if we don't, is the point.
I think we've talked about fiber optic for the last several years, and it's always been way more than fifty thousand dollars. So unless anybody else has any questions, I would be willing to make a motion that the city put forth a fifty thousand dollars for the QuickCom communications towards a fiber-optic internet.
On a verbal approval pending, looking at contract?
Yes.
I would second that.
Sorry, I was muted. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Right, motion passes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I thank you all for the trust and support. Again, we're here, we're not going away, and that's what we talked to the commissioners about. So again, thanks for your trust and support, we'll get with the county commissioners and we'll get on a contract to get that sent over to you, okay?
Sounds great.
Very good.
Okay, item B, oh, sorry, consideration of appointment of Mike Norman or Crystal Bauer to the steering committee? Chris, did you have anything that you wanted to say to this?
I don't, other than that we have two applicants for the lone position available at the moment from the steering committee, and so whoever you would like to appoint, we do, both of them have, are currently serving as board members on different boards. Mr. Norman is on the planning commission, Mrs. Bauer is on the tourism committee.
And we just, we just need one person?
At the moment, we do just need one person.
Okay, for whatever this is worth, I think they are both great candidates. I did notice that Mike Norman's came in earlier, and I guess what I would say is I would recommend Mike Norman and keep the other one on file, so if we have another opening, we can, we can move forward in that way.
I would second that.
Was that a formal motion?
Well, I think, the only thing I was going to mention was, I think, too, it says that Crystal lives out of Greeley, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that, too, there's some advantage for, you know, the Garnet steering committee, since it's supposed, I mean, it's ideally made up of Garnet residents for, to have someone who's in Garnet as well, who lives in Garnet. So we'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Mike Norman for the steering committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Then we will go ahead and move on to acceptance of USDA Community Facilities Grant for new public library roof.
Hi, this is Mike, can you guys all hear me?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Um, well, I think Travis, I'm assuming he probably distributed the letter of conditions for the library roof. You know, this is essentially, I know all the commissioners were present at the July, the last July meeting, this is essentially the same letter of conditions, again, it's just a letter of items that need to be met and accepted by the city before we'll technically transfer the grant money for the library roof over to the city. This letter of conditions, I won't spend a lot of time on it, this grant program is extremely simple. On page one, basically just lets you know that, just what I told you, we have the funds essentially earmarked for the city of Garnet. On page one, basically just lets you know that, just what I told you, we have the funds essentially earmarked for the city of Garnet. But once we, once the city has accepted this letter of conditions and signed a couple of forms and returned those to me. We'll get those signed off on by the program director in Topeka, and at that point, you'll know that the money is locked in for Garnet and will not be, it's basically untouchable by any other project, so. Garnet situation, we can provide 55% of the project cost as a reimbursed grant. Typically, once the project is complete, the city will pay the contractor for the work that's done and then submit paid invoices to me, and then I'll set up the transfer. For the grant. Really, the only some, the only real different thing I would point out from the patrol vehicle grant that we discussed in July is over on page two. You can see a breakdown of the cost there. The total cost of $43,120 was based on estimates that we received from the city. I know the contractors kind of had a two-phase approach, but I think talking from Travis, they want to do the entire roof. So that's a combination of a couple of different estimates that we received, again, from the city. One thing I would point out on page two, item seven, it mentions soliciting bids. You do not have to do that. That's just a standard statement. That's in every letter of conditions. You're free just to select the vendor of your choice. Things have changed since the. Estimates were were turned in a couple of months ago, you can go with a different contractor. It's totally up to you, but a formal bid process is not required. Really, on page two, not much else really to go over. I mean, item nine, if the cost ends up going above the estimated cost, that essentially will just be. On the city to cover that over. So our grant is basically set in stone right now. So just so you're aware, if it goes over, we, at this time, we don't have grant funds to match to help with any overage. On page three, it's got a few civil rights items there. I've done several compliance reviews on the city of Garnet for grants received in the past. There's never been any issues there, so I don't anticipate. Any issues related to civil rights at all that are kind of attached to federal money. Item sixteen, we already have a legal services agreement. There's, mentions insurance a couple of times on page three. Travis has always been really good about giving me the insurance verifications I need prior to dispersing that money. Let's see. Items nineteen and twenty. It's not really gonna occur with this roof, but typically we want to make sure that grantees don't. Use the funds to acquire equipment and then turn around and liquidate that equipment and keep the cash and use it for something else that may not be in eligible purpose of the grant money, but with this being a roof, that's not a concern at all. Really, the rest of it, there's no difference at all. With the grant we went over in July, page four. Has a couple of paragraphs about financial reporting, but you are not gonna have to do any financial reporting. I am simply just gonna pull. Your audit for 2020 or 2021, whenever the project is eventually completed, and that's gonna be the financial reporting that I will have on file for this grant, so. I know I went through that fairly quick. Any questions for me at all on this grant or its intended use or the reimbursement process, anything like that? Okay, um, well, a couple of the other, the two other documents. To reference, one is the letter of intent. Essentially, that's the one-page statement. It's just a good faith statement saying, yes, we do intend to comply with the conditions that we just discussed tonight. The other document is a request for obligation of funds. The front page has a lot of internal coding just for the agency, but you can see down towards the middle of the page one grant amount for the city. And then. On the middle of page two is a signature block for the mayor. Once that form is signed, actually both forms, once they're signed, you can just email those to me. I will send those up to our program director in Topeka. He will sign at the bottom of page two of that request for obligation of funds, and they'll send you the original back. And when you get that returned to the city with Dan Fisher's signature, that's when you know the funds are locked in, the grant has been formally approved, and you're free to move forward. With the roof project at your earliest convenience, so. Those two forms, and one thing I would just point out, if something changes or you decide not to do the roof. Or you decide to use a different funding source, whatever, and you don't want anything to do with the USDA grant, you can always just withdraw from the process. There's no penalties or anything of that nature. So you're not really on the hook or obligated to do anything at this point. By signing those forms. So that's, that's all I really had for in a nutshell. If there's no questions for me, I can let you guys go for the evening.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, well, I'll just wait. I'll get with the clerk whenever those forms are available, then I'll start the, get the process rolling.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Have a great night.
You for bear with us, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, then. I I'd just like to say, from the library perspective, that. I'm very thankful to Chris and especially Travis for doing all the work on this for us. That's great, and that I know they are anxious to start as soon as we tell them they can, so he was in the other day and he's like, I can start power washing, and I'm like, no, you can't. So they are, they are ready and to get started on it before the weather gets worse, so I'm anxious to get it underway, so. I'm just pleased that we got the grant and you guys helped us with it, so.
And as a member of the the library board, I'd also like to thank you all for everything you do to help us get the grant.
You're welcome. Glad to see it. Thank you very much. Be awesome.
So I will go ahead and make a motion to move forward with the USDA community facilities grant for the new public library roof. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, proclamation declaring September 2020 as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas talk of suicide should never be discussed, if you or someone you know is thinking of suicide, call the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. At 1-800-273-8255. Whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems. And has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support suicide prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Bridget Breckhaisen-Hus, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in Garnet. As the mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Garnet to recommit our community. To increasing awareness and understanding of suicide. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you for sending that. I will go ahead and move on to item E, approval of CDBG CV grant funding in the amount of $18,733.88 to mods towing and recovery. Chris, do you want to go ahead and explain this one?
So the CDBG CV coronavirus grant that we were awarded here a few months back. We are going through our first grant awardee of those funds from the city. The county also got an award of the same amount, $132,000, and so this is our first awardee, mods towing. This is the program that does have some stipulations based on. Various factors, including. Fifty-one percent of the workforce have to qualify LMI, as well as a couple other, a couple other factors, but. We're thankful that we have an applicant to to be able to award some of this funding to, and and hopefully we'll have a a couple more applicants coming up here in the near future. To award some funding to, and we have a year to grant this money out, but any money that we don't grant out goes back to the state. We do still currently, you may see on the. The spreadsheet provided that there's over $100,000 outstanding we still have available. As I said, we're working with a couple of people at the moment that hopefully. They'll get some of that awarded, but we do still have money outstanding that we're trying to solicit people to apply for. We want to keep that money here local. Pump that money back into our local economy and help and help out those who who need it here locally, so. We are grateful that with the state awarded us this funding and are happy to be able to provide it to some, help out some of our local business owners.
Chris, the only other question I have, and who typically decides, I mean, who's evaluating the application? Just so I understand the process.
So we have hired the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission. They're at Chanute, and they basically do this for a number of cities, counties, et cetera. But we've hired them to administer the the back end of of these grants. We're basically Julie Turnipseed is kind of the frontline. Communicating with the businesses and and trying to make them aware of the of the program and of the funding available and kind of what the general guidelines are, and then they make an application. And it gets submitted to the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission, and then they make a decision on whether or not they they're eligible or not. We kind of try to weed them out initially and say, hey, I'm sorry, you're not gonna qualify, or hey, it looks like you will qualify, but then they go to SCK RPC to be. More thoroughly vetted and made sure that, hey, yes, you are eligible, and then, you know, once we get approval from SCK RPC, that, hey, yes, this is a good application. It's fundable according to the state's program parameters, then we go ahead and bring it to you to approve.
Okay, so is that that, I'm sorry, is that the 3300 that is also listed on this table?
So the 3300 is the first half of their administration fee.
Okay, thank you for that.
We'll owe them an additional 3300 at some point later on. And they also do all of the backend auditing, which is a significant amount of work, basically to make sure that, well. When 51% of the employees are supposed to be low to moderate income for their whole household, that means that. The whole household can't reach a certain income level. And so there's a whole lot of work going into people's households. Paychecks with the Department of Labor and verifying that, you know, hey, this this household, in fact, is below that threshold. And over half of the people that work for this company's households have to be under that threshold, and that's a lot of work. And so they they put in a lot of work for their 6,600, and they're doing it for, I think, for this particular program. I think they have over eighteen counties and cities combined that they're doing that for, and it's it's significant, but. But we we do have, and that fee is lower than what they originally were planning on charging us. You may recall, I think it was. 15,000 or 10%, whichever number ended up being less. And so at 132, it should have been 13,200, but they decided to have that because they were successful with so many of the different applications, but they're only gonna charge us 6,600, even though. Commission authorized 10%.
Okay, so this is taken from that project budget, then?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, great. So Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I do not.
All right, Commissioner Gwen?
I don't either.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the CDBG CV grant funding in the amount of $18,733.88 to mods towing and recovery. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F, consideration of semi-monthly bills and payroll in the amount of $200,472.23. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I do not, thanks.
Commissioner Gwen?
I guess electricity at the campsites was just because the increased usage is why those bills were way up.
Correct. We're sitting on right around $34,000 in revenue on camping, which is about $11,000 more than last year.
Good deal. And the Jared Gilmore Phillips Audit Services, is that? Is that a final bill or an installment or what?
That's the bill for the housing authorities audit. That that should be it on them.
That's complete?
Yep.
Okay. Any explanation on the, we got a water plant engineering fee for $21,620. Can we get an update on what they have, what they've done for that money?
Yeah, so and I'll be happy to send out the, basically, I've been having them submit a report for what they've. Completed, I I guess, since the last billing, and I'll be happy to email that out for a little bit more detailed information, but. We've been having bi-weekly meetings, and anytime they they allocate any hours whatsoever, that's billable. But it's all part of the lump sum that we have. We've agreed to, the city agreed to back in, I think, 2015. And. But they've been working on plan designs for the. For the 60% designs. We're expecting, I talked, last I talked to Amelia, she's expecting to have 60% designs to us sometime in October is the is the expectation. As well as the architectural firm has proceeded to. To get a lot of work done as we just, as I think I put in my report, they have floor plans to us, so we've been reviewing those floor plans and. Moving forward on that, and that was all done by the architectural firm, so we're making progress on the on the floor plans there. And there's a couple other things that we've been working on. They they sent a crew out to find on our backwash line, we haven't, we've been trying to decipher whether or not. We were gonna be able to reuse that backwash line or not, and so they came out to try to do. Some surveying and figure out if that's gonna work or not, so there's been a variety of things they've done, but. Be happy to go ahead and submit that sheet to that email so you can kind of see a more detailed description as well, but but that's. They've done a decent amount of work and, but it is all highly priced work. I mean, they're engineers and. As they progress, you know, the rest of this year, we're gonna. We're gonna end up paying a lot of bills, a lot of money, because I was talking to Amelia, she said, you know, for for a water treatment plant. There's not a whole lot of difference between 60% design and 90% design. On some particular projects, there's a pretty wide gap, and there's a lot of work that goes into, you know, when you're at 60% design plans and when you're at 90% design plans. When you're 90% design. It it really means that you're pretty close to being able to go to bid. And, you know, at 60% to 90%, there's, there's really not a whole lot on a water treatment plant, so. That will probably, and at 90% done, that means basically 90% of the bill needs to be paid, that are paid, and so that's gonna be a. A big chunk of money awfully fast there. We're gonna pay 30% of the total project cost of engineering fees all in one big. Chunk or real close together, so like I, I think I mentioned a while back, but we're gonna shell out quite a bit in engineering fees here pretty shortly.
Do they have a forecast on when they're gonna get this along? Because we we was at 30%. Oh, gosh, it's probably been a year ago, so we've moved 30% in roughly a year. Do they have a forecast when they're gonna get to that 90%?
Well, and and you're right, it's taken a lot longer than what we would have hoped, but. You know, you also recall, we had a significant period there that we were waiting on the Osage Nation to get back to us on the cultural resources survey that held everything up. We were waiting on the state to approve our sewer, wastewater lagoons for the new water plant that have been there forever, but they just had to get permitted. We were waiting on an anti-degradation study that had to get done that we weren't expecting. You know, there have been a number of things that have crept up that were unanticipated that we had to. Had to do, they've delayed things, and, you know, the the parkland conversion, you know, that's obviously throwing things for a loop as well, and, you know, we're. We're close on that one, I believe, as I put in my report. I think Josh said he'd be getting with me this week and hopefully getting that all finalized. I got the. Contract from Terry this afternoon, so assuming that Josh gets everything worked out on his end, hopefully this week we can get that that tidied up, but. But I. But um, but I, we, it has taken a lot longer than what I was hoping. I, I asked the question as far as well. So if we're going to be, you know, to ninety percent that close, do you think we're going to be able to go to, go to bid this, you know? Maybe even this fall or, or this spring or this next spring? And Amelia was hesitant on that. She felt like, well, it might be closer to summer that we're, that we're getting to be able to go to bid, which is unfortunate, but you know, I, at, at this point, I'll, I'm certainly uh looking forward to making some serious progress, you know? E- even if we've got to jump through some more hoops with KDHE or whatever the case, you know, we're still working with National Park Service and wildlife parks and tourism on the land conversion deal is, as well as a couple of other things, but but if we can start to make some, make some headway and get some of these issues ironed out, we should be able to hopefully uh at least know that, hey, our designs are good, everything's been approved by KDHE. And, and so now we're waiting on, you know, just a, a final few things before we can, you know, start getting contractors to bid it for us.
All right, thank you for that. That's all the questions I had.
All right, great. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to pay these semi-monthly bills and payroll in the amount of two hundred thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Informational items. Item A, the second annual lunch on the lawn is hosted by Morning Mingle on September eleventh, two thousand twenty from eleven AM to one PM on the courthouse lawn. There will be hot dogs, chips, and drinks available. So this is being held as a thank you to all of our first responders for their service in our community. So anyone who is interested in attending that and is able needs feel free to come in to lunch.
We hope to see you all.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to departmental reports. Uh, Commissioner Cole, any comments you'd like to make?
I did. I had a couple. Um, I wanted to, to tell Travis that I'd really like to see him go forward on the employee incentive plan. I just know, working with about sixty-five employees myself, it's always great to tell people what a great job they're doing and you appreciate their hard work. So I think any way that you can do that um is always a, always a good thing. It always comes back twofold. So good deal on that. Uh, and I wanted to remind everybody that uh there's something out there. It's called back to business spark grant funding. And uh if you have any questions about that, if you're a business, you might contact Susan Westing. That's it.
Hey, Commissioner Gwen?
I did not.
Okay, I just wanted to thank everyone for sending in their reports again. There, looks like there's a lot of work that is happening and a lot of exciting things. So thank you for everyone who is able to submit those reports. We'll go ahead and move on to the city management's report. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I'm gonna have to look real quick. How about you go to grave and come back?
Okay. Commissioner Gwen?
I, uh, no, I did not.
Okay, uh, Chris, did you want to elaborate on anything in your report?
Uh, not really, unless you had any questions. Uh, I was, just a couple, couple of things that came up here recently that I'd, I mentioned real quick unless you had any questions on the report.
Um, the only thing I was going to ask is um about the brush cleanup. That is, that's for October twelfth through sixteenth, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is that going to basically happen the same way that cleanup week happened? You'll start at the north side of town and work your way down?
Uh, that's our game plan, um, is to essentially follow the same path as what we normally have. Um, it's just unfortunately, we won't be picking up, you know, normal your junk and debris and whatnot like we have in the past in terms of the cleanup week. And it'll only be yard waste and limbs, et cetera.
Thank you. That's all I had. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
You clarified the one on the cleanup, on the brush cleanup. Um, the other one, Chris, can you tell me a little bit about the employees' payroll tax through the end of the year, President Trump's?
Yeah, uh, so the executive order that the president issued essentially defers payroll taxes. So the six point two percent of, of Social Security and, and FICA tax, everybody has taken out of their paycheck. Uh, it defers it to basically the end of the year. Come January first, essentially you owe that. You're going to owe that on your taxes for your two thousand twenty taxes. So essentially it's a loan. The, the government is saying, we're not going to charge you your taxes right now, but you're still going to owe it. Um, the president has claimed that if he gets re-elected, he will do what he can to try to make sure that that ends up being forgiven instead of being a loan. Uh, in which case, then nobody's going to owe that money. To, to be entirely honest with you, I think even if he is re-elected, uh, I have a feeling that he's going to have a difficult time getting that through the Senate. Um, even if the Senate stays with a Republican majority, I feel as if that's going to be still an uphill battle for him to, to, for him to wage. Uh, because Social Security is in such a a hard spot, uh, just in general, that, you know, giving up that revenue stream for even four months is, this would be, would be a significant blow to Social Security. So I, I don't think he's going to get enough support to make that happen. So you know, that's, that's a challenge in and of itself. Um, the IRS released guidance, uh, finally well, I think it was the last day of August, uh, which essentially said that what they are recommending employers do would be to defer those taxes, not take out those taxes from people's paychecks. And then come January first, we charge double the taxes. So instead of charging six point two percent, we charge people twelve point four percent. And so then from January first to April thirtieth, we would charge everybody twelve point four percent of their income and defer and, and remit that to the federal government. So that way, everybody's making up for their back taxes and you don't have to worry about you know, getting that money, uh, because it's going to be incumbent upon the employer, not the employee, to make sure that those taxes are paid. So if you go to file and you don't wind up, you know, filing or, and paying your total share in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty, then your employer is going to be on the hook to come up with that extra money. And if they don't take out double your, uh, your, your FICA for the first four months of two thousand twenty-one, then they're going to have to come up with that extra six point two percent for your first four months of wages. So that's what we're looking at. Uh, my expectation is from what we've talked to our auditor, um, is we're looking at setting up a basically it being an option for city staff, whether they want to opt out of that or whether they want to go ahead and have those taxes deferred. I'm trying to make sure that they're making an educated decision, because if they choose to have their taxes deferred and they get, you know, that extra money now, uh, then come January first, if it winds up not being forgiven, they're going to have to pay double the taxes. And just wanting to make sure everybody's completely aware of that scenario. Um, in the event that they want to opt out and go ahead and have those taxes withheld from their paychecks, basically we'll set up an entirely separate bank account um to hold those monies in. And then in the event that, uh, you know, it comes due, come January first, whatever the case, we can go ahead and cut the government a check for that amount. In the event that Trump is successful in getting the taxes forgiven, then we will go ahead and return everybody's money to them. And any interest that was generated off of that will be divvied out proportionally based on how much of a how much of the total piece of the account was that person's contributions to that uh, to that total account. So try to do it as, as fair as possible and give people an opportunity that they won't have to wind up paying a bunch of back taxes if they don't want to be put in that situation. So that's really what we're, what we're looking at. It's a, it's complicated and, and it's going to be it's not going to be any fun for anybody to try to go through this whole process, but uh, I, I didn't want everybody to be forced to be in the boat that, well, come January first, you're going to have twelve point four percent of your, of your paycheck taken. So.
That is a complicated process. So thank you for explaining it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, the only other things I've mentioned real quick would be, we have a, a task force meeting Thursday morning, um, kind of an update on where we're at, uh, COVID in the, in the county. Um, I, last I knew, I think we had thirteen active cases um in the county. So we've jumped up there quite a bit. We, tomorrow evening, if you're available, there is, uh, you may recall the lieutenant governor, Lynn Rogers coming to town uh here. It was, was it last year or the year before? I can't, I think it might've been in twenty nineteen, but but Lieutenant Governor's uh Office of Rural Prosperity has been holding virtual meetings uh to basically get input again. And so the Southeast Kansas region of which we are, we are a part, is having the virtual, our virtual meeting tomorrow evening from five thirty to seven. If you're able to attend, uh, it'll it'll be all online and certainly would love to, to have your participation if you're available. And we also are going to have our pre-construction meeting for the airport, uh, apron reconstruction project next Thursday. So we're getting started on the airport, uh, apron reconstruction uh here shortly.
Thank you for those updates, Chris. August two thousand twenty financials. Commissioner Cole, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Gwen?
I did not.
Okay, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. Is there anyone who has anything they'd like to contribute? All right, then is there any need for an executive session?
Not for me.
Okay, then, great, then we'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passing. Thank you so much, everyone, for um attending via Zoom.
Thank you. Have a good.